I'm actually kinda happy about smaller groups. But I wanna start with a little pre-drill. So if you could take out a sheet of paper, that would be great. And the first thing, we're gonna do a couple terms in the skull. Couple of the more difficult ones. So the first one, then I want you to tell me. So now we'll go right into the nitty-gritty details. So I'm opening up the skull. And as I look down, this is the front, this is the back. By the foramen magnum, which is this big hole here, on the side, I got these two ridges. These two ridges on the side of the foramen magnum. I wanna have you tell me what are these ridges called? It's where we have the hearing apparatus in there. What are these ridges called? That number one. And then number two, we're going right towards the midline of both of these ridges. And there is a little thing where the pituitary gland sits in. A little indentation, kind of a fossil thing. What is that called? It's an interesting name. That thing here where the pituitary gland sits in. There we go. That's number two. And so when I, again, I reiterate, say the same thing many times. When I do the test, I either ask for bones, for landmarks, or for muscles. These are landmarks, what we just did. The next one, number three, I want you to tell me a bone. And I want you to tell me the cheekbone. What is the cheekbone called? What is the cheekbone called? Good. Then, we have another bone, number four. That's the bottom of the spine here, that bone. What is that whole bone called? That's number four, that whole bone. Then the next one, number five, that is. I want you to tell me, on the rib, we have a few bumps. As the rib comes around, goes into the body like that. In the back here, we have one bump that touches the body of the vertebra. And then a little narrower area. And then we have another bump that touches the transverse process of a vertebra. What is that bump called? In the head, facial muscles. I want you to tell me, as number six, the deep one on the side of the cheek, the deep one. That's really powerful in babies, for someone. It's attached to the corner of the mouth and goes deep. What is that one called? That's number six. And then number seven, we have a muscle from the corner of the mouth that goes up to the cheekbone that we just talked about. The muscle from the corner of the mouth up to the cheekbone and helps us in smiling. What is that muscle called? On the arm, on top of the humerus, we got a couple of bumps. And these are the bumps that then the muscles in the back and the front of the shoulder blade attach to and hold that arm, that arm in, that humerus in. What is the bigger one of those bumps called? Now I lost the count. Number seven is that, or number eight? Eight. That was number eight. And then number nine, if I go down on the shaft of the humerus on the outside, I got a little roughage. Little area where we have a muscle go in. It's gonna be the muscle coming from here, going and holding it in like that. We're gonna talk about that in there. But what's that roughage called? That's number nine. What's that little area of your call? As I angle distally towards the elbow, we orient ourselves, the head is here, the head points medially. On the inside, we got this bump. It's right here. If you bang it, it hurts. Skin is right over it. What is that bump called? Sublandmark. It's where the funny bone is too. Behind here, the nerve goes through and if you hit it, it shoots down the fingers. That was ten. Oh, good. Okay, good. And then we go to the forearm muscle bones. So now we're already eleven, right? And we have two forearm muscles. We got one that goes to the thumb and one that goes to the pinky. And this is where we have a palm forward, that's the anatomical position. On the one that goes to the thumb, we have a bump here. What is that bump called? All these bumps? A landmark. There's a landmark. What is this landmark called? And then the last one, that we're gonna do, that will be number twelve, is the, on the other muscle bone that goes to the pinky, what's the tip up there called? The tip of the elbow? You do this, you're touching this part. What is that called? Alright, so let's solve it. Let's go backwards. What was number eleven? Twelve? Yeah, you guys better just say it now. What was that called? Electronon process. Speak it out loud. The more we repeat, the easier it gets. What is this bump called here? Radial tuberosity. Very good. Then we got this bump here. Medial epicondyle. Very good. And then what about the roughage up here? deltoid tuberosity. And I think then we went to the big bump. What was the big bump called? Greater tubercle? Good. The smiling muscle, what's that called? Zygomaticus. And what about the deep one on the side? The buccinator, buccinator, buccinator. That's the nice thing about anatomy, you can kinda say it the way you want. Because the whole world uses the same term, they all speak it differently.
That's the difficult one.
That's the difficult one, yeah, correct. The bump on the rib, what was that called? Rib tubercle, yeah? Or tubercle of the rib. And then the bone? Sacrum. Cheekbone? Zygomatic bone. And then, we did the indentation here where the pituitary gland sits in. Selaturcica. And the ridges, petrous portion. Petrous portion. The creperiform plate is in the front, where the little holes are supposed to be, that the olfactory nerves come up from the nose, the smelling nerves, and they go up into those little holes and attach to the brain. So that's the creperiform plate. So when I look at upper extremities muscles, I group them together. So the first rib I do. So here you see, this is the superficial trapezium. We talked about that last. Now we're talking about muscles that, the first group I wanna talk about is muscles that anchor the shoulder blade into the trunk. And on this side, obviously, the trapezium is removed. You have one here too, which is removed. So we can see the underneath muscles. So we got muscles back here that attach to the medial border or the vertebral border of the scapula. They go inward and hold the shoulder blade in this way. And then they also go up into the neck and they hold the shoulder blade into the neck. So from the back, we got a few muscles. This one is the same as this, it's just the smaller version of it. So the roughage has a minor and a major. You see a muscle has a major, that means the major one. You see a minor, that's usually the smaller one. So you see, if you say major, you assume there's a minor somewhere. Otherwise, you don't have to say that. So that's how that sort of terminology goes. And then we also have muscles that anchor the shoulder blade in sort of, hold it in the chest from the front. From all the way in here, and they anchor it into the chest this way. They hold it against the chest wall. And then the last, so that's from the sort of underside. And the last muscle that holds the shoulder blade in is one in the front that pulls it down or into the ribs. If you look here at that one, that's attached here, which is shoulder blade. Goes inward that way. So that gives us some solid connections from the shoulder blade into the trunk and anchoring the upper extremities to the chest wall. And then from there, we have a group of muscles that gotta hold the arm into the shoulder blade. Those are those rotator cuff muscles. And then after that, we start moving the arm around. So the arm, oop, this is gonna draw. The arm muscles are attached here and here to move the arm around. Because they gotta pull on the chest wall as well. Those are movers. And then after the arm movement, we're gonna have elbow movement. And those muscles are attached on the upper arm. And then the wrist movers are the last, what we're gonna talk about. We don't usually go into the fingers in this session, but those muscles are in the forearm. So the muscles that move, the joint are usually proximally more towards the attachment of that joint, of the arm around. We're gonna screw that in later with my Swiss armina. Alright, so that's the overview. So let's go to the details. So the first muscle I wanna talk about on that list is the serratus anterior. So the serratus anterior, as I said already, is the shoulder blade on the vertebral border on the underside. So it's here on the underside. So they flick that shoulder blade backwards to make visual. And then these muscles go nicely onto the ribs like that. And attach the shoulder blade, anchor it this way. You can see that here, if somebody does a push-up or just a plank and use the shoulder blades, not as attached to the trunk, that means that muscle is not as they working. Because if that muscle won't be working, the shoulder blade go or give you a winging scapula, look like that. So it pulls back, so you couldn't hold the shoulder blade from the trunk. So that's known as the serratus anterior. From the word's perspective, serrated, so when you look at from the start. When you look at it, it looks a little bit like a serrated knife. So that's like a bread knife. That's where they start the terminology from. So that's the one on the underside. Then in the back, we got a couple players. We got that one that is on top here, anchoring the shoulder blade or lifting it up into the neck. And the name is levator lifting it up, levator scapulae. Lifting up the shoulder blade. And that's attached on the tip up here, the shoulder blade, the scapula medial, upper corner or angle. And then goes up to C1 to C4, onto the transverse process here in the neck. It's holding that shoulder blade up that way into the neck. So that's that. Levator scapulae muscle. One of my favorite, that muscle is big. Well, people, that muscle is underneath the trapezium. So it's harder to get to. But it's really thick. And it really is a lot of times a player that makes people pain, gives people pain. People have something pulling on the neck up here a lot of times. It's that muscle that's yanking on it. So that's why even if you gotta paint here, you gotta look at all the stuff too, to make sure that the connections are working or that the system functions from that perspective. In my work, I look at what's not quite functioning right and try to make it function better. And that's sort of where we sometimes get a little frustrated with medicine when it comes to muscular skeletal things. Because often they wanna cut something out. And that's often not that indicated. Alright, anyway, then we have the rhomboids. So we go a little further down. The levator was up here. The rhomboids go from the medial border and go into the spine that way. And they hold the spine that way. You can sort of visualize that. And we go, in a booklet, you have these, all muscles have these kind of pictures with Xs on them. And always fail to talk about, might as well talk about. So when you have a problem in your rhomboid muscle, it could give you pain patterns here. So the red is what pain that muscle can give you. And the Xs stand for if you were a massage person, who you are, or with your family, you're good at the hands, you can find pressure points in those areas and squeeze them. And then the muscle has to relax because you squeeze all the blood out of it. But it replenishes the muscle with fresh blood. And very often, those pains, they get smaller. So that's like if you do foam roller, tennis ball work, these are great places to start finding points that can give you relief. Those are the muscles, oh no, we got one in the front that I cannot forget. Right here, we got the pectoralis minor. So the pectoralis, the pec, is a big one on top, is the pectoralis major. And that's gonna be a muscle that moves the arm around. That does this kind of stuff, that we're gonna talk about in a minute. But underneath that, we have the pec minor. And that muscle is attached here to the coracoid process in the front, going into the ribs and anchoring the shoulder blade down to the front and holding it that way. So that gives the sort of the three areas of stabilization for that shoulder blade. And then from there, now the shoulder blade is anchored, of course, it moves around a little too, those muscles help. But a large part of the deep, deep muscles is to anchor stuff and to hold it together and not moving it as much. Okay, it's not black and white, but generally, you visualize it. If you have the deepest muscle will move the arm around like that, how is the superficial muscle, what would that do, right? It sort of makes sort of sense. But now, we're going to the rotator part. And those are the shoulder anchoring muscles. But these are all attached to the shoulder blade in the back and in the front. And then anchored into the greater tubercle and the lesser tubercle, or the humerus. So they're all attached here and underneath here and go into these two bumps. And hold the shoulder blade in like, the arm, the humerus in like that. And hold it firmly in. So they're always working those muscles. We have three of those muscles in the back and one in the front. These are the beginning letters of their names. The first is supraspinatus, infraspinatus, teres minor, and subscapularis. All of those names, you probably already have in your head. Because we did study the spine of the scapula. And we started the supraspinous fossa, infraspinous fossa, and subscapular fossa. So if you look at these three verbs here, supraspinatus, infraspinatus, and subscapularis, their names are all from these fossils. So the name is already there, you already have that name. And the ones in the back, supra and infra, are attached above the spine of the scapula, below the spine of the scapula, and then go into the greater tubercle. Which is a little bit more to the outside, the greater tubercle. We have one more small bone, the teres minor, that's sort of a strangle. And that is almost like the infraspinatus. It's just that last sliver that's attached on the shoulder blade here, over here. That's kind of, or of the whole infraspinous fossa, but just on the tip here. And goes also to the greater tubercle. And we call that the teres minor. But see, that wasn't to our, that's the rotator, or the sit muscle. They often refer to us to sit muscle. Okay, then from there, now, we are already almost halfway down. We can go move the arm around. When we look at the arm movers, the first one I go on there is the pectoralis major. So that's underlying, the first one here is the minor coming down from up here. Underneath it, the major goes from the arm here, which is the intertubercular, between the two bumps area. And goes into the sternum, the ribs, and also even the clavicle up here. Such a really broad muscle. And it's forceful, you can pull that, you can pull that arm around in this direction. Then I wanna go to the latissimus torsi muscle. Because in the front, in the front, you got the pec. Then in the back, and the pec goes into here. And does this stuff with the arm. Then in the back, you got the muscle coming up and goes into the same place. Underneath the arm, and then also here in the front. So that's a big muscle in the back. It's kind of, you know, it's further down, not on top, but it's sort of the equivalent of the pec in the back. And so that muscle does all of those motions. All of this bring it down, bring the arm down motion back. And so that's why swimmers have the big muscle, big one of those. Because that's the crawling motion. So you see, look, this is why this guy is so fast. This is his lats there. Look at these guys. The lats is what you can feel here, that's lats, all of that. So it's a very interesting muscle. We do have a little helper for the latissimus torsi. And that's known as the teres major. So now we have a minor, we have a major. And that's, the minor is attached here going up to this bump. The major is different, it's attached on the further down, at the angle. And then goes to the front of the humerus. So you gotta look at, oh shoot, I didn't even bring the model out yet. Let me do the model in a minute. So the major is attached here, goes underneath there. The teres major. And the teres minor is attached up here, just goes to the outside bone. We can see the pec right in here. That's nice for the pec. We can also see the serratus anterior here on the side, as it comes in. You can sort of see as it comes around here. Then on the arm model, we take this one off. We haven't talked about this one yet. But what we can see here nicely are the rotator cuff. You have the back one here, it's the supraspinatus. You go below, that's the infraspinatus. And then here goes to the outside. And then here, you see that one on the bottom, that last one, that's the teres minor. We talked now about teres major, that one goes underneath. You see the difference where it goes? It's different where it goes. You wanna make sure to differentiate that. And then underneath the scapula, we got the subscapularis. That's underneath here. And it goes throughout here, we can't really see where, well, it goes right in here, actually. So the deltoid on the model is this muscle here. That's the, it's sort of like, oversits the shoulder popper. Like if you have a padded shoulder, it's kind of that muscle that I think of. So you see that it's attaching nicely all around here from the clavicle, that's the clavicle, the spine of the scapula. And then goes into this deltoid tuberosity on the outside. It's a really nice muscle, does a lot of different things. It goes all the way, spine, acromion, and then it reaches the front. And it does, it does almost say, I'm putting as a main function on abduction, which is bringing you on to the outside. Where you can see the posterior fiber will bring your back. And the anterior fiber will also bring your forth. I don't find too many injuries in that. But often, you can find if, it's really stiffy, you can hurt, you can feel it. Then probably somewhere here, like a little bit something off. When there is a joint that's not quite working right, the muscles around it often tighten up, it spasms. That's why a lot of times, you can get, a massage feels really great, but unless you also work the skeletal a little bit and ease off the joint pressures, then it's not as long-lasting as when you do both together. That's why it's, it's very interesting, I often have patients that become, "So what is it? The muscle or the bone? What is the problem? Where's my problem?" And I always say, "It's both." And sometimes they would argue with me, it's like, "Can't be both, I started, it's two different systems." It's like, "But the movement apparatus works as a whole." We got, so that was the deltoid, and then we got a few more coming up. We got the coracoid brachialis on that list. Because the coracoid process goes down into the humerus and helps raise the arm up. The name is coracoid process brachialis brachialis. Chapter number one, but those body parts are really helpful to refer back to. Because we're gonna have four muscles that have the brachial in them. And if you see that word, you know it's up here somewhere. And now let's do the elbow mover. So if I look at the elbow joint, I'm looking at flexion and extension, bending and straightening it out. Not that much more up here. The stuff in the forearm is pronation supination, that's by the forearm. So I basically gonna have muscles in the front and the muscles in the back. That's really where I need to go with that. So we have a look in the front, I got the biceps brachialis. Biceps means belly. So biceps means this muscle has two bellies. The red stuff is the muscle where it contracts. The white stuff is the tendons that then anchor the muscle into the bone. So bi means two bellies, brachialis, look at that. That's the area, you know? That muscle is also cool because it's attached up here, actually, on the shoulder blade, this one. And then on the radius, it, so it jumps two joints, not just one joint. So it does have some function up here, a little helper function. But its main function is flexing the elbow. And then actually, this one has another main function. And as you can see that here. And let me show you that on the model. So if you look at here, so the muscle goes down to this part here. The radial tuberosity, that's, yeah. That's why I wanted you to do that in a quiz. So if I have the palm down, like that, that's palm down, that's this. Those two cross over, the radius and the ulna. The biceps brachialis goes right underneath, underneath here, to this pump, but underneath. And if it pulls, it rotates that back and it brings the palm up. So it does supination, that's called. So pronation is palm down, supination is palm up. I remember that because I can hold, pour soup in my hand if it's supination. On the model, it's the one, it's another one I often eat all models, it sort of falls off. It comes out. Then underneath the biceps brachialis, I got the brachialis muscle. See, another one that will break your stuff in. So that's, makes it easy that way. And the brachialis muscle is, on the model, if you take the biceps away, underneath, that's the brachialis. So you see on the side, that's a pretty thick muscle. So it's a major strength muscle. This one just goes from the lower shaft to the ulna. And really only does the flexion of the elbow joint. A very powerful flexion. And then, now we have the elbow in this position, now we gotta bring it back. So we're gonna have a muscle back here that does the contraction and straightens it out. And that's gonna be your triceps brachialis. That's a very powerful muscle. It's sort of a combination of the brachialis and the biceps. Because try these three, three heads, three bellies, no, three bellies. Well, actually, it can also be the head, okay? And one of them goes to shoulder blade two, like the biceps did. But the other one's anchor into the humerus in the back. And then into the electronal process, the tip of the elbow. They pull this big basher, they pull it back, that straightens out the arm. The brachioradialis. That's, see, another one with brachial in there. So you know, again, you gotta look in that position here. Your arm, you're not gonna open the leg for that. This one is a little tricky though, because it's attached at this, the land of the humerus. And then goes all the way down to the tip of the radius. Stylo process. It sort of, it helps with the flexion, but it also doesn't really work with this part of that, like flexion. Like bringing the wrist upward versus from just elbow and have this little. So if you do this, it's like, it's called, you have probably, it's a tennis elbow. So on the model, you see, you've got muscles in the forearm here. And they're really mostly attached at the medial epicondyle. And, or further down. For our purposes, at this point, medial epicondyle. And you can see that here. And then we got muscles on the backside. And they're attached more or less all at the lateral epicondyle. More or less. But for our purposes, that's a very good, that's a common origin. And then on top, we got this one muscle that you can see reaches quite high into the humerus, of distal humerus, but goes all the way down to here. And that is the brachioradialis muscle. So that's where it gets a little tricky. So as we get to the forearm muscles now, I'm gonna sort of point them out in reference to the other muscles. Because you got so many muscles, which one is which? It's kind of hard to know. So we learned three on the backside and four on the front side. The medial epicondyle here, that bump sticking out is that common origin for all these forearm muscles that we're now gonna talk about. And so when we look at them, so now let's go back to this one. And now it's the other side, okay? So that's now the medial epicondyle. And all these muscles come down like that. We have four, we have one like that, two like that, three goes right down the middle, and then a fourth goes here to the pinky side. So we got one that goes quite across. That's known as the pronator teres, right here. Pronator teres. The big, that will go across. And again, underside of the picture. So you always have to make sure we reference things around appropriately. So that's the pronator teres. That muscle is actually interesting, let me see. That muscle reaches across, goes to the radial side here and pulls the radius over the ulna as we go palm down, which is pronation. So the word pronator refers to the function, the pronation. The pronator teres is the major pronate. We have one down here too, but we don't worry about studying that, it's a smaller. The interesting thing about this muscle is, the pronator teres muscle is where the median nerve goes through. Right here, the median nerve goes through it. And if you always go palm down and type in that, then on the computer, we're always using that muscle. Because we have to go palm down. That's why some keyboards are like that. So we don't stretch that muscle too much. Because if that muscle gets irritated, it can squeeze the nerve. It gives you carpal tunnel syndrome. And so in the old days, the problem with carpal tunnel is the pain is down in here. Because the brain thinks of the nerve going to that place at the end. But the nerve has to travel. And if it's pinched anywhere along its pathway, the brain thinks the pain is down here. And so in the older days, the ages and stuff, people have pain down here. They cut open, there's a, oh, I should talk about that ligament. Hold on, let me talk about that. There's a ligament. That's a good picture for that. That squeezes all this together here. If you look at, if you look at the wrist, you have these bones here, these wrist bones, they're sort of made that they form this shallow depression here. See that? That's known as the carpal tunnel. And so over that, we have ligament holding all that together. That's known as the flexor ericanatus, you don't need to do that. But that goes around, holds all that together. And all these tendons going into the fingers go underneath that thing. And the nerves do too. So surgically, once they do, if there's pain in here, I think, well, we do too much typing, too much using, too much friction. And that could be the case, but we cut that open, make a loop, bridge. Again, once we cut it, we cut it, we can't uncut it. So we have to be a little thinking about that, because if the diagnostics are not that great, this is not gonna help. And so that's when they started figuring out the squeeze also here at the pronator. And then up here, we can have another squeezing area, uh, by the scapula as well. And that can all contribute. And now, you know, nowadays they do a nerve production velocity test, they, they see how fast the nerve travels and where does it get injured or, or pinched, they can figure that out. So that's a really cool muscle, that pronator teres. Really important muscle. I think I talked about it in the ergon- in the workstation evaluation a little bit. Alright, and then, the next ones go further down. Those, those, they now go all the way down to the ribs, all the legs, trees. And we got one that is on the, goes to the wrist on the thumb side, and we go on the, goes to the wrist on the pinky side. This is a very picture for that. You see here, one, one goes down here to the thumb side, and the other one goes down to the pinky side. And they are known as flexor carpi, they flex the carpi, that makes sense. One is radialis, the radius runs on the thumb side, and one is gonna be ulnaris, and the ulna is on the pinky side. So that's how you remember those kind of things, it's in the name, it's all in the name. If I look at the model, we have that pronator teres going across, and then we got one that goes all the way down to the thumb. And that would be the flexor carpi radialis. And then on the others, we chop over one, and on the other side, we have one that goes all the way down to the pinky. That would be the flexor carpi ulnaris, the pinky. And so now, what we need is one more, and that's in the middle, right here. And see, this one goes across over, on the model, you can see that, the tendon goes over that little white thing, that's that flexor rectus. And that one is known as the palmaris longus. See, you can see here, easier too, that's the flexor rectus. And there's one tendon that goes up top of it, over it, and that's the palmaris longus. If you look at, if you do this with your hand, if you do this, you can see it here, it's sticking out, that's the palmaris longus tendon. Some people don't have, 10% don't have that muscle. So it's not the most important muscle we have, or not have, it sort of does this general pulling on the palmer fascia. Then we got other muscles, look, we got, we got, oh, we got flexor pollicis, pollics, whenever you see something with a pollic, pollics is the thumb. We're gonna have some muscle underneath these four that we talked about that moves the thumb and also the fingers. Somewhere we probably, yeah, see, digitum, digitum, digitum means fingers. So we don't study those in this session. So when you see, I'm not gonna tag in here, that would be a muscle that we didn't study. It's either one on the outside by the pinky, the one in the middle going down to the palm, palmaris longus. The one, the flexor carpi radialis go to the thumb, and then the pronator teres go right across. In Thai school, they, they showed us this way of memorizing that. Where you can take the web of the thumb here and put it right, right in your medial epicondyle and sit on that thing, and have all your fingers go down the forearm, and so the fingers are your outline for all the muscles. Pronator teres, flexor carpi radialis, palmaris longus, and flexor carpi ulnaris. Um, and then all we got left is the backside of the arm. And in the backside, we don't need as much strength, because we have, mostly we do this and hold things this way, not, we're not walking around with the roche bag holding them that way. That'd be kind of weird. And so we have less muscle mass in the backside, you can also see that here versus here. Anyway, on the backside, we got a couple, they are attached at the lateral epicondyle, that's the outside here. And, and we have, like, in the front, we have now one going to the carpal on the rock, thumb side, one going to the carpal on the pinky side, and then one going on top. So that's the three we're gonna do. So we're gonna do the extensor carpi radialis. So that goes to the thumb side, so see, there's a lot going on here. You, you, there is even a lot in the breast, we don't worry about that. Just do one, the, the one there, okay? So that goes to the thumb side, and then we got the one here on the inside, that goes to the, oh, shoot, over that. Extensor carpi ulnaris here, that goes to the pinky side here, that's the extensor carpi ulnaris. So on the model, it gets, it's goofy. And you see, you've got all these different muscularies here. So that's why I'm only doing three. So I'm gonna do the one on the outside, if the tag is on the outside to the thumb, it's the extensor carpi radialis. And then if the tag is on the inside by the pinky, it's the extensor carpi ulnaris. And then we got the last one, and that's known as the extensor digitum. And you can see that, that's the one that goes from the, um, on, on top all the way down, but you see the tendon goes to the fingers. So you see here, goes, the tendon here, the muscle here, tendon goes into the fingers, that's the extensor digitum. And so on the model, now, we have this one, then we have this one, and then we have these out here. Those are the three. And the last, the one that on top here, next to it, is, that was the brachioradialis. So you wanna be careful to orient, orient yourself on the brachioradialis, that's right in the, between the flexors and the extensor muscles. So that's the brachioradialis. And then from there, you get into the back of the head. Next is the extensor carpi radialis, one more time, the extensor digitum, and then the extensor carpi ulnaris. Alright. How's that? Good? Questions? You probably knew all that already, right? There you go, that's what I said. Okay, if you're pretty good, then let's do a little, um, quizzie. Where is my, I need an arm. So number one, now there's too many arm muscles. Tell me the muscle here on top, the one that's above the spine of the scapula. What's that muscle called, number one? Number two, I want you to tell me the muscle that's on the outside here, the shoulder pocket muscle there. Number three, what's the big muscle in the back of the arm called, number three? And then number four, it's a little trickier, and I actually didn't show it on the lecture. It's a muscle that's in the front here that goes from the coracoid process, which is behind in here, into the humerus. What is that little muscle called? Number five, we're gonna go to the forearm muscles. And I want you to tell me a muscle that's on top here that crosses the forearm. It's the forearm, it crosses the forearm over, and it's a muscle that brings the palm down. And then we jump all the way to the outside, or the lateral, oops. And I want you to tell me the muscle that goes to the pinky side. And then number seven, we got one muscle that if you take the thumb and you go all the way up, and you're almost hitting here the biceps, it's this big, it's not, it's pretty big actually for forearm muscle, it's right in here, that long one. Sort of in between the front and the back. And then last, we got one muscle that is here on the upper side, on the outside of the arm, that goes from the, uh, lateral epicondyle all the way down to the fingers. What's that one called? Alright, let's all win. What's the last one called? Extensor digitum, very good. Then a one here on top.
Brachialis.
Brachioradialis. That's a tough one, make sure you study that a little bit. Brachioradialis. And then on the front side, on the flexor side, we have the one that goes to the pinky. Flexor carpi ulnaris, very good. And then we have one that goes across on top, that brings the palm down. Pronator teres. And then, did I do this one?
Yeah.
What's that one? Very good, you guys, coracobrachialis. It's very good. And then, did I do the triceps? Good, triceps. You got that, right? That's like, you know, that's easy, thank you for all that muscle mass being the same muscle. If we had this discussion, the whole arm should be just one arm muscle, right? That would be, you know, study that, but unfortunately, it's not that simple. And then we had the shoulder pocket muscle, the outside, what was that called? Deltoid. And I think lastly, I started with this one up here. That's suprosit. Thanks. Good, does that make you feel a little better about these muscles?